I'm calling to order our city council meeting for this evening. It is Wednesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. All members of the city council are present this evening with council member PAC joining us online. All others are here in person. The council office staff, we have Mr. Hallmark and Ms. Quick. We're also joined by Mayor Burton, various members of his staff, and members of the public. First item of business this evening will be our pledge of allegiance. And we will have Derek Orth lead us in that. So Derek, if you would please, uh, at the podium, make sure you hit the button on the right to turn on the red light for the microphone and then we'll go with the pledge.
If everyone could complete, oh, sorry, if everyone could please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated.
All right, we will have public comment here in a moment or two, but before we do that, we have a special recognition this evening of Ms. Tangi Sloan, who has been recognized as recorder of the year. Uh, Mayor Burton, are you or Corbin, uh?
There is a, a long list of fantastic things that Tangi has done.
I think the list attached was three and a half pages.
Yes, and about needle side papers also. Tangi, oh, no, oh, no, Tangi, oh, 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 oh. Just like on Snoopy and the teacher, remember? Okay, anyway. So we've all known how great she is. She has been in the city for several years. And she has moved from different positions, has learned a lot, and has been spectacular at every spot. And then when I needed to find a recorder, I was so excited that she applied for that job. It was an easy decision to make, and I have never regretted her being the city recorder. And she's done excellent in that position. Other recorders have come to her for advice on what to do and how to do it. We knew she was the best. Now with this award that she's received, everybody else in Utah also knows she's the best. The only concern I have is they might try to pull away. I know that the council has tried a few times as well to pull her into their office instead of in the, where, the office where she is. I think she's happy where she is, council. She did an excellent job there, that's true. That will still benefit the city, but we'll, we'll keep her where she is. Anyway, so as the Utah State Recorder of the Year, I present to you Tangi Sloan.
Council, um, all of you know Tangi well. She's been at the city for a very long time and we're very grateful for her. Um, and we're excited that she was able to receive this reward, award, not reward, an award. Um, on, on the slide that we've put up are just a few of the things that Tangi has done, but let me um, say that the turnover, um, and, and reorganizations that she's endured over the last five years has been a lot. She's probably had five different, um, directors take over her, uh, department and um, she's just rolled with the punches with a positive attitude every ti- every day. She's focused on customer service and she's focused on mentoring her customer service, um, representatives, many of whom are in the audience right now. Um, if your customer service representative, would you stand up for a moment? Sorry, I know I am embarrassing you. Daniela, Sia, Alex, and Rachel is the Assistant City Recorder. Um, and Rachel's little assistant. Um, Tangi has done an incredible job of mentoring them. Um, I think Rachel can attest to that because she mentored her into becoming an Assistant City Recorder. Um, she develops her team and they promote to other departments. So you see positions open in Tangi's office a lot. Um, but it's only because they have promoted into other departments, most recently to the courts. Um, she has improved processes on a regular basis. She's brought in a new grammar request software. She's, um, implemented Easy Vote for election and, uh, financial disclosure management. She's implemented a new dumpster reservation software. She's upgraded Laserfish along with IT. Lots and lots of process improvements. We've never seen an office move forward with technology and customer service as quickly as Tangi's done. In addition, she's opened up a passport office and we are so grateful because, quite candidly, it saves us some property tax increases. She's brought in, um, last year it was about three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, but as an average over the last several years, it's a bit two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue. Um, the demand continues and she continues to meet that demand by staffing with Spanish speakers so that we can provide better service, better bilingual services. We have over six thousand applicants per year. And I think that having a positive influence of government um, on our, not only our residents, but people throughout the Moss Hedge front is an incredible, um, impact and we're grateful for that influence. Tangi deserves this recognition and we're so grateful that she's been recognized by the Utah Municipal Clerks Association as well. So, thank you, Tangi, for your time.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank my family for being here tonight. Um, and thank the administration and the council for all your support. Um, and of course my staff, I have wonderful staff. Um, none of this, you know, passwords, all of that would be, uh, I couldn't accomplish it without them. They're the ones that come in every day and, and do the work. I just help lead them, so, um, I need to thank them. And thank Rachel, she's a lifesaver. Thank you for approving that position. Um, it, 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 it's just been amazing. So thank you to everyone. And then I, I do want to say thank Denise and Corbin and the mayor. I appreciate all their support. Thank you.
Council, I'd like to also recognize, um, the many members of administrative services that are here to support Tangi in this recognition. We loved her being a part of our department and our division. Um, we have the IT team, Kyle Reima and Robert Arred here to support. We have Derek Orth from Human Resources here to support her, um, as well as many other staff members. So we're grateful for Tangi and we want her to know that we really appreciate all that she does every day. Thank you.
I don't think we're gonna let Tangi off that easily. I think there's a few on council that still want to share some thoughts. We'll start with Mil- with council member Worthen.
So, um, first of all, usually we don't get this many people in here unless they want to yell at us. So see how well you're loved. This room is packed. So thank you for getting the awards and we can actually get people. I hope you all understand that you have to be here for the entire meeting. Dang it, okay, I didn't go up well. I'm gonna miss you. Um, for those that don't know, I, I'm, uh, resigning at the end of this month because I'm moving, but this lady is a superstar and I'm sure you all know that, but you have been such a help to me. If she doesn't have an answer, boy, does she get you an answer. She has, she's smart as a whip. She, you know, she doesn't claim to know everything, but she is super smart and can figure anything out and has. And she has just been an amazing leader. I mean, you say you can't deal without your staff, you know, that's because you're an amazing leader and we are so fortunate to have you here. And if I can see you in Colorado, I would do it. So God bless you. I love you. You're fabulous.
Council member Whitlock.
I'll just say ditto. She covered most of it. The other thing that I think that you need to know is how kind you are to everyone, that you make people feel welcome, and I appreciate that.
I remember the joy you have when people come in to file as candidates, as a candidate. And it's a scary thing to show up and file as a candidate and thank you. I can't, you, it's here, but thank you. Thank you for being who you are and thank you for being in our city.
And I'll just say, Tangi, I try to help you the most by staying out of your way. So I appreciate, I appreciate everything you do. I know how, how, um, how city, how city government doesn't function without a well-functioning clerk's office. It doesn't, it just doesn't work. So, um, so I appreciate what you do and, and, um, I'll, I'll continue trying to stay out of your way.
There are a lot of important jobs in the city. Um, Tangi's is one of the most important and the most impactful. She's the one who's responsible for our elections. She's the one who's responsible for, uh, compliance with open records. She has so many touchpoints with all of the neighbors here, the, here in the city. Um, she's also pretty much everybody's favorite. Um, absolutely love her to death and thrilled that the state of Utah has recognized how valuable she is to our, not just our community, but to other recorders throughout the state. If we could, Tangi, can we get a picture with you real quick to memorate this? All right, and I would, I would highly encourage everybody here to go out to the city's website, pull up the agenda for this evening. It's westjordan.utah.gov. You can go to meetings. There's an agenda spot. And look at the document that's attached to the special recognition. I'm not joking. It's like just over three pages of information, just, e- even at that, it's only scratching the surface of how valuable she is to the city and what she does for all of us. Much of it unrecognized and underappreciated, but thrilled to be able to recognize her tonight. Thank you, Tangi. With that, we will move on to citizen comment this evening. For the few folks who are here in person, there's a number who are also here online. Anybody who'd like to speak to the city council and address the council tonight is welcome to do so. Uh, we will allow you to speak up to three minutes on any topic that you'd like. It does not have to be on the agenda. It can be on the agenda, but it doesn't have to be. Um, we do have a couple of public hearings that are coming up a little bit later on this evening. If you want to speak to those public hearings, we'd encourage you to share your thoughts about the Wood Ranch Public Infrastructure District at that point, or the definition change from material change. We have public hearings for those two specific items. That said, if you're not going to be able to make it to that point in the meeting, you're all welcome to speak during citizen comment. You just can't speak twice, like during citizen comment and the public hearing on the public hearing. So, um, for those who are online, if you would, if you'd like to speak, hit the little button at the bottom of the screen that shows the raised hand icon. Um, and with that, uh, just a reminder that typically during council or during citizen comments, we don't engage in back and forth. We're here to listen. It's the citizens, the residents' turn to comment, our turn to listen to your thoughts. If there are very specific questions or something that we can have a member of the mayor's office help you out with, we may direct them to get into, or we may ask them to get in touch with you, uh, to help answer those questions, but for the most part, we're here to listen. So with that, uh, again, if you're online, hit the button to raise hand, but we'll start with the folks who are here in person first. Who would like to address the city council? I see a couple sort of making for the microphone, but. All right. As you come to the microphone, we'll ask that you share your name and if you're a resident of the city. And then you'll have up to three minutes. All right.
My name's Brett Segmuller. I am a resident of West Jordan. Um, I'm here tonight speaking on the Ninetieth South Expansion Project. Um, I'm sure you guys have already heard, there's a lot of people that, uh, want you guys to think about it more than just go and then proceed with it. Um, I know one of the big things with the city um, is a place where people can create a community where there's opportunities to live, play, and work. Um, with that road going through with all the kids that go back and forth, you're gonna be taking out the place, place or part of that um, with the city because there's a lot of kids that go back and forth between the neighborhoods that are off Ninetieth. Also, I know we've been told that, uh, there's, we keep getting referred to back that the master plan, this is the master plan. Well, there's been acknowledgement, um, from people in the city that the master plan has been changed, if you will, at times, um, reiterating that maybe some subdivision should not have been approved. Um, another one was the ivory development across New Bingham. Probably shouldn't have gone in because that road was supposed to go back behind Dan and then out that way. So basically, we're, we're here asking you guys to hold off on it and try to come up with some more solutions so that we can appease the community in the neighborhood. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Brett. If you would, state your name and share if you're a resident of the city.
Yes, my name is Ty Hendrickson. I am a resident of West Jordan. Um, I, tonight I represent a hundred and eighty-seven voices, also around the same concern of the, the Ninetieth South Expansion. Um, we are not asking that it be stopped totally, but how it's being implemented be reconsidered. And to do that, there needs to be a temporary hold put in place while we can have more discussion about the impacts on our neighborhood and on our children, on our quality of life. We recognize that growth will continue and must be addressed in transportation plans, but we believe that there are other alternatives available. Those alternatives merit further review and further study and further input from the people of West Jordan. In addition to looking at nine thousand south and the New Bingham highways, a review also needs to be conducted on the impact for the Ronwood Park and for traffic control on Duck Ridge Way. To that end, we have filed a petition where we asked the city of West Jordan to put a hold on development on the nine thousand south expansion between Mount View corridor and U one eleven. And here are our concerns that they may be addressed with those further studies. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nikki George. I am a resident of West Jordan. And I also wanted to come today to speak a little bit about the Ninetieth South Road going through. Um, I have the daunting task right now of having an almost fifteen-year-old daughter who is going to be getting a learner's permit very soon. Um, I've, this is my oldest. I have not had the experience yet, but I, um, as I contemplate teaching a young teenage driver how to navigate roads from my neighborhood, this strikes fear in my heart. We have two pretty serious roads sandwiching our home, um, once Ninetieth South goes through. And not a clear way to get her to a safe, quiet neighborhood. Um, and I understand that access to our neighborhood, um, and community resources is a high priority for the city of West Jordan. I've seen the strides that you've made in making that a priority and hope that as you consider ways to create access for our children, that, um, we can take precautions to make it safe for kids to get to the resources that they need, like schools, parks, churches. And that we can be considerate of things like pedestrian-controlled um, light signals so that children can cross safely and that we can minimize size so that we aren't sandwiched between two very dangerous roads. So I appreciate your consideration and wish you good luck as you make important decisions for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Who else would like to address the council? Please.
Hi, my name is Laurie Shin. I was here a couple of weeks ago. Um, and I really appreciate those who have responded to texts and phone calls. I've had some very good conversations um, that have made me feel a little more confident about finding solutions for our, the same issue, um, with the Ninetieth South and New Bingham. And today my request would be, I just heard that um, nine thousand south, the, the construction going west to U one eleven is coming up really, really soon. And I feel like before that construction happens, we need to have some solutions in place for U one, or for, um, Ninetieth Southeast of sixty-four hundred west. So I just would like to ask you to, um, make this a priority on your city council agenda. I know that you're really busy. You've got lots of things on your plate. But if this could be bumped up in priority so that we can, um, find some solutions before that intersection is a done deal, I would really appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jackie Gell and I live up, I'm, I'm learning a lot of you guys' names and, uh, like Pamela Blue said, it's a little, uh, nerve-wracking to go into doing that. And it's really scary to get up here and talk to you guys. So public speaking at its best. Um, I just want to start with a couple of comments from those that can't be here tonight. We have, um, a large worldwide broadcast or something that, um, a lot of our youth and parents are attending right now. So, um, something that has come up that, um, they wanted me to share is, um, they want me to point out that, um, our plan says that, um, we want to create a better community with opportunities to live, work, and play. Um, and then the other thing was, since they could not be here, it says in the study, the only reason given for why New Bingham Highway cannot be in the main highway volume corridor instead of nine thousand south is that it has been in the plans. That is the only reason given. They are not, they're not giving us one solid reason why it has to connect. So with that, um, I would like to just, um, throw some questions out so that, um, we can have more dialogue and maybe we've, we've been able to find, it's been a little tricky trying to find answers to questions. Um, trying to find out what facts are versus what's floating and then what all the neighbors' rumors are and so we, um, we would like to know what is the tie line for the nine thousand south realignment? And, um, that, that section of road that we're talking about, not from sixty-four. Uh, um, what will be the impact on the school's safe walking routes? Um, I also had looked into some things as well as far as busing. We're gonna be losing busing for the high school as well. So that's gonna increase pedestrian traffic over that bridge probably. So something to think about. Regarding the light at New Bingham and sixty-four hundred west, huge issue, I understand, is UDOT's deal, but, um, we're just wondering, what are the specific requirements for getting a light there? What requirements are not currently being met? And how can we begin the process of asking UDOT to put a light here? Um, what roads are the city of West Jordan and UDOT responsible for? How can we work with consultants during the environmental needs process? Um, and I think that's where this all kind of comes down to. We have that traffic study. Now I need to expand on that a little more. And is the city or UDOT over sixty-four hundred west, nine thousand south, and New Bingham Highway? Um, is it over? Um, can we ins- install a street light along New Bingham Highway past Mount View?
Apologies, unfortunately, we are at, we're at the three-minute timer.
I have one more question. Can I throw it out there or pass it on? She's awesome.
Okay.
Yeah, I did. I am representing.
Okay, continue.
And, um, can a crosswalk be installed at sixty-two fifty west and nine thousand south where pedestrian traffic exists today? Um, and lighted with the pedestrian signs? And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Who else would like to address the council?
Logan Gregory, West Jordan. Um, I spoke here last time. There's a problem with, I think, communication. So addressing a board in this environment, there's no communication that's one way. So we don't know what's being considered. If notes are being taken, taken, excuse me, if points of, of concern, um, are being recorded, how, how do we get, I saw you writing, but I see others that aren't.
The whole meeting's been.
Meeting's been recorded, city's taking minutes, so everything's documented. We also have a couple members of staff that are notating everything as.
Awesome. Well, forgive my ignorance. Um, I don't do this often, but I'm kind of passionate about this like others that live out where we live. Um, one of the concerns last time that was brought up were streetlights and traffic congestion and Ninetieth South is supposed to be punched through and that's gonna alleviate all those concerns. Problem is, if you look at it, um, something that's not being considered that, that I've seen is sixty-four hundred west is considered to be, that's gonna be the main route or the main artery for all that traffic that's gonna be future in those homes back there. It's a mile from sixty-four hundred west to U one eleven. So that can't be the last north-south run. So I don't know what everybody's thinking, like that's where the heaviness is gonna be, but then if you look at the lights from fifty-six west, northbound, Mountain View, southbound, Mountain View, sixty-fourth and Duck Creek, that's a lot of backed up traffic in that area. And then if I understand correctly, there's no light on sixty-fourth and Ninetieth if, if that goes through. Something to consider, but again, um, the point is there, there needs to be some dialogue with those that live out there. If you don't have a dog in the fight or you don't live out there, it's not gonna really impact you. Um, and obviously, as, as you've heard, it impacts a lot of people that have bought homes out there, raising families out there. Consider, um, kid's safety. One kid gets lost, there's no rewind from that. Those are the decisions that are, that can't be taken lightly. Which kid out there is expendable? None. So that's my time. Thanks. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Logan. Who else would like to address the council? All right, if you're online and you're calling in from a phone, I do see that we've got two folks who have called in by phone. If you're connected just by phone and not by computer, you'll hit star nine to raise your hand to indicate that you'd like to speak. Otherwise, if you're connected by a computer, you'll hit the little icon to raise hand. We will go to, um, give me just a moment here because I know the folks that are online don't have the ability to see the timer, so I've got, so, one right here as well that will play. We'll go to the phone number ending in six four zero nine. So you should be able to unmute yourself. So the person whose phone number ends six four zero nine, please hit star six to unmute your phone. So please hit star six. That will allow you to unmute. All right.
Uh, can you hear me?
Now, we can. So if you would, please share your name and city of residence and then we'll start your three minutes.
Okay, my name is Jake McNinch. I'm from West Jordan, Utah. Uh, so I am representing, I have a petition going, uh, of three hundred and forty-two signatures currently. Um, we are raising our voices against the new high-density development proposal put forth by Peterson Homes. This proposed development is located west of Stokesley Drive and south of eighty-two hundred south in West Jordan, Utah. Uh, uh, and just, uh, a few points that, uh, have been, I guess, commented um, for reasons for signing. So high-density housing can lead to increased traffic congestion, congestion, strain on local sources such as water and waste management systems and a potential decrease in pro- property values. Um, studies have also shown that it can increase crime rates, overburden schools, produce less revenues for local governments, create parking problems. If you look at Mountain View and seventy-eight hundred south garbage apartment development, why would this be any different? Um, there's cars lining seventy-eight hundred south because there's not enough parking, because they've built apartment complexes. Um, I, I, and it's crucial that we maintain the character and quality of life in our community. We urge local authorities to reconsider this proposal and explore alternative options that respect the needs of existing residents while accommodating growth responsibly. to reconsider this proposal and explore alternative options that respect the needs of existing residents while accommodating growth responsibly. Please uh consider all of these points uh when uh considering this. I know it hasn't been added to an agenda. Um, and uh but please consider this as uh this is added to an agenda in the future. Um, I've had past problems with Peterson Homes uh in a development close to my mom and dad's house who lives in West Jordan. Um, so please consider this uh as you vote on this uh in the coming months. We will have uh much, you know, strong opposition to this. You have a whole neighborhood basically that is opposed to this. Um, and you know, the the uh surrounding areas of this are all half-acre to, you know, quarter acre lots. This is being proposed right in the middle of all of those. Uh, it's it's zoned right now for low density and very low density. Uh, people don't, people don't want this in the middle of of the neighborhood. Um, and yeah, so please, please consider this. I don't think this is gonna uh make the city or our neighborhood better in in really any way. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your, thank you for your comments. Um, as noted, that one's not on the city council agenda yet. That one, since it's lined use, we'll go to the planning commission first and then to the city council. So I would encourage you to continue to be involved with both so that you're able to speak when it comes to the planning commission and then also keep in touch with the city council. Thank you for your comment. Uh, we will go now to Mr. Wilkinson. Let me hit the button to allow you to speak. All right, Mr. Wilkinson, if you could introduce yourself, share your city of residence, and then we will start the three minutes.
Uh, yes, Ryan Wilkinson, West Jordan.
Please proceed.
Yeah, I, there's, there's been a lot of comments tonight. Uh, you guys are wasting your time. The city council, they don't care about you. I've been fighting a particular fight for almost two years. The city plan, the other city plan supports me. It's about noise from the airport. And their plan has uh, it's recycled from year to year, the exact same verbatim terminology supports my position. It cites it as a major generator of noise, yet they have done nothing to stop the expansion of the airport despite their plan saying that they have a goal to do just that. I, they don't care about you. Uh, someone mentioned earlier, I don't see you guys taking notes or doing whatever. Yeah, because they're not. They're up there chatting, laughing. They don't care. So I I hate to say it, but you're wasting your time. It does feel good to come to these meetings and still blow them up a little. Speaking of that, uh, so so Zach Jacob, my my representative, uh, I had posted some things on his campaign Facebook page. Um, I I I wrote him an email back in April of twenty-two. He never responded to it. This is long before any litigation or anything had been threatened. Uh, he he here's his response. The insinuation that I am incompetent, non-responsive or derelict in my duties because I have not replied to a specific email from someone threatening to sue the city and myself personally is ludicrous. Well, Mr. Jacob, how do you explain then the email I wrote April fifth? Four hundred and ninety-seven words. This is not an insignificant email. It's not two sentences. Eight days go by, I come to my first city council waiting to see what's going on. It's not addressed there. I get a phone call with you the next day and your response to my question, why you didn't get back to me on that was frankly, I wasn't sure you were serious. This is long before any litigation had been threatened or anything like that. How do you explain that? You said it's ludicrous to assert that, but this is fact. Respond to it tonight, please. I I I'd love to, I I need an answer here. Or just say, you know what, I am derelict. I am non-responsive and I and I apologize. That would be okay. I might even be able to move past this, this one thing if you would do that because the facts do not support you here, sir. You are in the wrong. I want you to acknowledge it. That's all I've got.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. Is there anybody else online or in council chambers that would like to address the council? Please come to the podium. You'll need to hit the, i- if the red light's not on, you'll need to hit the button on the right.
Thank you.
And share your name and state your city of residence.
My name is Laura Shan. I live in West Jordan between nine thousand south and New Bingham. I've just been wondering if those of you who haven't come to see our roadway and just to be able to see like our concerns in person, if you would be willing to and have a dialogue with us and just discuss and be able to have a meaningful conversation one-on-one. Because I've found that as people who come and talk to us, it's been a lot more meaningful and we can be able to get things done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to address the council? All right, um, two quick items. Number one, if somebody would like to invite council out, you're more than welcome to reach out to us. You can set a designate a time and a place and send an invitation to the members of the council. Um, I believe most all are happy to visit and chat in person because yes, that is much better dialogue than than this more formal format that we have here. Um, item number two, um, we do have tentatively agendized for our work session, which is next Wednesday, discussion about the transportation master plan. And I know Jamie is working on some information to present about this particular um stretch of road. Um, there's a couple of different projects here and he's I I I've noted him busily typing away, noting the questions that came up. I know we've had a couple of conversations with some neighbors throughout the the last week. But he is preparing, so information will be shared at that meeting. Now, we don't have citizen comments at that meeting, but he's gonna take everything he's heard over the last couple meetings and incorporate that into what's what's shared with the council because the council hasn't really formally dived into just this project. Um, that said, if there are additional things you would like to share uh with the council, you're always welcome to send us an email at um council, councilcomments@western dot utah dot gov. A lot of ideas flying through the head and not all the words are making it out the mouth right now. But uh, yes. But uh, thank, thank you very much. So we will close citizen comment period. And now we will move on to our reports to the council. We will start with reports from council members as to items that we've tackled over the last couple of weeks, starting with council member Green.
Just a couple of things to report. Yesterday, uh, council member Bloom and I uh sat in again with associated municipal uh council uh meeting. Uh, the last one for the year, the next one we'll be meeting with the mayors with the council of government. So and then we get to take December off. Uh, and then I don't have to worry about the agenda anymore because I'm not gonna be the chair. So that's even better. Uh, the uh, but we talked about uh the coalitions on how uh health coalitions are built. West Jordan has one of those. Uh, I think we just uh, it it'll be great when uh we can uh get, I I think that's probably tied to healthy West Jordan. Um, and uh, we'll get that uh going farther. The one thing that's interesting and and mayor is something we may want to uh push with uh Jordan School District is that there is a survey called Sharp. And it's a student survey that talks about student health-related activities and those kind of things and student perceptions. Um, Jordan School District can share the macro results and we may be able to get it faster than uh what the county health department is trying to get from all the school districts in the valley. And uh, if we could get that, that might be helpful not only for uh Healthy West Jordan Committee to to help with some of the the targeting, but it would be beneficial for the uh youth council uh to to maybe even look at that and come up with suggestions on how to make uh or or we can use that to make the youth council better with health, health-related issues or they can help us tackle the health-related issues. So just something to think about if we can work with Jordan School District on. We don't need the, we don't need the individual responses, obviously, just the macro results. Uh, and so that was interesting to sit through that, learn, learn about uh the few thing, the the things that the county's doing to help make uh the the, you know, the the uh the county more healthy. Uh, the the last couple of things, uh, the chief's not here, but uh thanks to the West Jordan Police Department for uh I I I was able to attend the Faith in Blue uh bre- pre-breakfast uh and and whatever faith, whatever Faith in Blue is called that was on Saturday morning. Uh, and it was great to be part of that and to have uh community leaders uh come together, work with the police department. This is the third time that we've held this. Second time I've got to go to it and it's a great event. Uh, and uh it it helps the res- it helps the city as as other community, particularly diverse uh groups of people work together with the police department to work on community issues and it was great. I did learn for the first time that there is actually a Sikh temple on seventy-eight hundred south that I driven past probably four million three hundred and twenty-eight thousand times and didn't know I drove past it. But I learned that it's there now. And now that I drive down every seventy-eight hundred south, I see the flagpole and it's like, okay, I know what that is now. So it's interesting that as long as I've lived in West Jordan, I didn't even know that was there. So it it's, it was a great learning experience for me as well. After that, uh, then it was uh chalk with a cop. And uh, I I I was able to leave the the Faith in Pre breakfast uh uh Faith in Blue and come down to City Park and uh be part of the chalk with a cop activity. And we got some um great artists, um, both as kids and as employees of the city. And uh, I was gonna say, if uh, if the city needs an artist, uh, I don't know if Chief Wallantine will let you steal office or mains, but he's a great off, he's a great artist. So if we need some graphical design or some art, go steal him because he's, he's a great artist. Uh, but it was good to see kids. Um, I know it was reported back in in a, in a written thing from the chief that uh it definitely made some impact in certain people's lives because uh a a a lady who has been um who has had domestic violence um committed against her felt unsafe to do a lot of activities. But knowing that um, this activity was gonna have a whole ton of cops there to help uh with the 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 chalk with a cop. She brought her kids and were able to do something. So those kind of activities have a great impact on the lives of West Jordan. We don't, uh, people who live in West Jordan and you wouldn't think that, you know, kids drawing um chalk art with uh, and by the way, whoever drew drew the red U with the white circle, that was the best art of the day. Uh, even if it was bi-week. Uh, so anyway, um, it's great to see that an activity as simple as drawing chalk art um over on the concrete by the Bowery, um, how much impact that had on the lives of kids and their parents. So thanks to the police department for sponsoring that and the Faith in Blue um on Saturday. Those were great activities. Thank you.
Council member Whitlock.
Already on, okay. Um, just want to report that we're still meeting as the childcare subcommittee for Utah Leagues and um uh the uh, the non-municipal government influ- uh attendees were invited to not attend our next meeting, which I thought was kind of funny, which is a legislator and a couple of legislators, I guess, is what it was. So so that'll be interesting to see what the next meeting comes. Um, really what we're supposed to focus on at the next meeting is what do we want to, is there anything we want to put forward for a bill? So if you, if any of you have thoughts on that that you want to share, feel free to share them with me and I'll share them at our next meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Council member Worthen.
Um, you guys should all have an email in your email about the budget. Um, so if you haven't seen it, take a few minutes to look at it. I don't, I won't go into too much detail. Just make sure you check your emails on that. And then um for you that don't know, uh, my last council meeting will be October twenty-fifth, last Wednesday of this month, I guess. Yeah, it is. Um, I'm moving to Colorado. It got moved a little quicker than I thought. I had every intention of finishing out the year, but like I said, things moved along a little bit quicker. Um, Calvin, I wanted to thank you and uh Kieran, our council members um for coming last Thursday to the dedication of a portrait that my husband drew for the city. Um, for those of you uh that weren't able to come and didn't hear the story. Um, my husband is an artist, um, does beautiful paintings, uh, doesn't do it for a living, but um he just has, was born with the talent. And um our city manager Corbin had asked him to present his artwork in City Hall once the remodel was done. Unfortunately, I think that's not uh gonna be done till twenty thirty-five or so by now. So unfortunately, because we're at twenty forty. So uh because we're moving, he wasn't gonna be able to do that. But he said he still wanted to because of us moving and the fact that we've lived here. Well, I've been here for forty years. And I've had the great honor and privilege of serving the city for pretty much forty years. My mom was a school teacher. I volunteered in the school system and then came up to the chamber and the paper and, you know, I've done a lot of things with this city and I've loved it. It's just who I am and it's part of who I am. So my husband wanted to do a painting that represented service to your city. And um I'm gonna share an interesting piece that I didn't get to share during the presentation. Um, you guys will understand the full circle of this. Uh, we were thinking, what what represents service to your city? Wha- what is a symbol of true service and commitment and sacrifice? And when we were in Castle Rock, Colorado, one day we parked in front of the police station. There is a statue of a canine service, uh canine police dog named Jax. And we looked at each other and we thought that's it. For those who don't know, we lost Maya back in February of twenty twenty. She was one of our canine officers who literally saved the lives of some of our police officers um by getting in the way of bullets that could have killed them and it wound up taking her life. And we just looked at each other and knew that is the ultimate symbol of service, giving of oneself completely unselfishly. So my husband did this beautiful portrait. And I found out that day when I talked to the handler of Maya that he has a new canine officer, uh canine uh police dog. Name is Jax. Yeah, uh, you can see some of the lips on some of the face of the people there. I had no idea until after we did the presentation and talk about full circle. So I wanted to share that story because I I it's a privilege. Um, sad to go, but excited to start the next phase of our lives. But thank you for giving me a moment to share the rest of that story.
I'll report that earlier, um, council member Green and I had the opportunity along with uh Mr. Anderson to present Zion's Bank with a Good Neighbor Award for a hundred and fifty years of service in the community. So um, with that, I'm not seeing any other lights from council members. So we will look to Mr. Hallmark for the council office report.
Thank you, Chair. Just real quick, we have an update on the youth council. We have advertising um happening as we speak. We know that applications and flyers are circulating at West Jordan High, Copper Hills High and Itinerous, early college high school. So we look forward to applications rolling in. The deadline for that is next Friday. So we look forward to those applications, being able to select our inaugural youth council. And um I know council member Green and I will get together to discuss some technicalities and if there are any questions or concerns on the council um at any point, then feel free to reach out to me and I'm happy to discuss it with you. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Burton.
Thank you. Is the slide deck ready? Let's go ahead. So Golden West Credit Union, Bradley Credit Union, our city. I've mentioned a little bit about this before. This had the grand opening last Friday. But this is the location that you might recall, the, they were, the previous owner wanted to bring it in for rezoning so they could sell it. And the council did not approve the rezone and look what happened. So way to go, council. But anyway, that's a, the second Golden West Credit Union in the city of West Jordan now. But anyway, that's a, the second Golden West Credit Union in the city of West Jordan now. Okay, last Saturday, we had the Bike with the Mayor. So those of you invested, sorry, you'll have to wait till next year. But if you make special arrangements, I'd be happy to bike with you. So this is a, a small group of us that we biked on the Jordan River Trail and had a great experience. Hopefully we'll have more next time. Special presentation, oh, sorry, Zion's Bank, the Councilmember McConaughey talked about as they were celebrating the hundred and fiftieth anniversary. I actually got to attend one of them over in Kearns. And the reason I went to the one in Kearns, there was a business that I was the manager for, a lighting store. And that was where we did our banking several years ago. And it was kinda fun to make that correlation. So I was unable to make the one here in West Jordan. So thank you, Council Chair McConaughey and other council members for attending that. But I did go to that one over there. Because Zion's Bank across, they're doing it. And Council Member Worthen talked about this a little bit. This is a picture of the painting that her husband Mike made for us. And that was fantastic. Unfortunately, due to health reasons, I was unable to be there at that presentation. But I don't want to thank Mike for doing that. So if you pass that on to him, we certainly appreciate this. And you can see the skill and talent that he has. It's too bad he doesn't do it for money. But we appreciate him providing that donation for us and the memorial that will provide. First party, our continuing happened. Last one we had was October ninth, I'm sorry, October sixth. And that was a lot of fun. It was uh, show tunes from Broadway. Our next one will be on November third. So plan on doing that. That'll be classic violinists and pianists and it'll, should be a lot of fun. They're from people who have recently performed at Carnegie Hall. And so the next step is to come to West Jordan. Of course, you work your way up. Councilmember uh, Green talked about the Faith in Blue Breakfast. Thank you, Councilmember Green for being there. And there he is, right there on the front row. This is a fantastic thing that our police department does. Our religious communities, regardless of their congregation, serve the community. Our police department serves the community. And if they can partner up and do this together, if, if they could, they have some things they can do and the way they work that together, help make each of their jobs easier. So we appreciate them taking the time to come and meet with our police department. And then Saturday, that same Saturday, we had our dumpster day. That was the last one for this year. And this was our most successful one we've had yet. Those continue to improve in success. You can see there's a couple of people coming through to do that. There were probably four or five rental vehicles and I took a picture of it. I didn't show that, should have. Somebody came with a tow truck to bring their trash in on a tow truck because he had tow truck business and that's why he had to carry his trash in. People are very resourceful. And so we're, we're pleased that it's so successful and that'll continue into next year after the winter season is over. A couple of upcoming events, you can see the fire department has an outreach event. That'll be at Rose New Garden Landing on Saturday the fourteenth. That'll be next Saturday from nine to eleven. So if you're having a rough day and you're really burned, come out here and you'll feel better. They put out the fires and that'll be great. Something I got in the mail today, which isn't on the slide deck, is the Jordan Education Foundation sent me this. This is their annual report. And of course listed in there under one of the donors is West Jordan City. And that's because we donate not money, but we donate things and a little money such as them being able to use Western STEM, the park, not Western, it's happy Veterans Memorial Park and some other things. So I'm gonna leave this here. You can take a glance to it and see the report from them. And they also included a thank you card to our city from their executive board for the collaboration that we have with them and they have with us. So that's a good opportunity because as you probably know, there are more students from West Jordan that go to Jordan School District than any other city here for Jordan School District. So we are an important player to them and they're an important player to us. And that is my report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Administrator, Administrative Officers Report, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. Just wanna make you aware of one thing, uh, progress update on the Wheels Park. Construction's been going on. Uh, yesterday, the uh, dump beds from Rio Tinto were delivered. Uh, I like these pictures cause it gives you a sense of the size and scale of those dump truck beds. Uh, as you know, the Wheels Park will have a mining theme. And Rio Tinto has been working with us to help us uh, execute that mining theme in donating some um, surplus items from the mine, including these dump beds. And so these dump beds will be integrated into the park design. And uh, will become a central feature of the, of the uh, Wheels Park play surfaces uh, going forward. So it's exciting. It's moving forward. Um, and they'll continue construction. And people will really dig that mining theme.
No, thank, thank you for that. My wife works over at I Don't Look Canyon Elementary and she saw it. What? She said there have gotta be at least twenty police trucks out front and something giant moving down the street. And why would this be out here? What is this? That? That makes sense. Thank you. Sorry, please proceed.
Oh, that's it for my report tonight. Thank you.
Uh, if I could real quick, um, I know there's a number of folks in the neighborhood that are right near that area. Could we also request a really quick update on the progress and timeline for the eighty-six hundred South flyover? That's happening over Mountain View Quarter. Then I, I'm guessing a number of folks that are here tonight would be interested in that. Plus, it's always fun to put Brian on the spot.
So the latest update is they're on schedule. We got a great contractor doing that job. So they're on schedule. It is slated to open spring of twenty twenty-four. The side treatments will lag a little bit behind, but they're gonna get the road or the bridge down. So they can open up the traffic. Then they'll start doing the side treatments. But it is on schedule to open twenty twenty-four spring.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions for?
Hey, Brian. So are we still on track for seventy-eight, seventy-eighth between the traffic circle and sixty-fourth?
Yes. So the latest on that is Greg has the sewer project out to bid right now. There's a sewer line that needs to be um, installed, well, updated, um, with the bigger pipe. They're gonna do a pipe burst. Um, and then we'll follow behind probably summer. Or we'll be behind Greg. So it'll be summertime when we start our widening project. But yes, it's on, it's moving. So.
So I, I noticed the copper rims put some curb in. Is that gonna be the perimeter of the road or are we going wider than that?
That, that will be the, that will be the widening portion. That, where it'll be. They're, they're widening that section already, part of their development.
Okay.
I had to think for a minute, sorry. Yeah, that's the width. That'll be the width. So, but it is moving. Um, the plans are pretty much done. We're working, still working with Rocky Mountain Power to acquire some property. That's, that's what could hold this up if it's held up, but it's moving forward. So we're, we're, we're making some good headway.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right. Um, not seeing anything else for reports. So we will move to public hearings. First public hearing, I mentioned we have a couple tonight. The first one is for the Wood Ranch Public Infrastructure District. Um, and this one's Denise. We'll excuse.
Thank you, Council.
Councilmember Jacob did have a conflicting appoint, uh, conflicting item tonight. So we'll excuse him for the evening.
Um, first I wanna recognize, um, in attendance, uh, in support of um, the Wood Ranch Public Infrastructure District are members of Third Cadence, who is the developer. Um, Randy Larson is here from Gilmore Bell. He is um, the legal representation on behalf of the city. Um, services are paid for with the um, Public Infrastructure District or by Third Cadence. Um, as well as Brennan Brown, who is um, an investment banker with DA Davidson, who is doing all the financing um, and planning for the Public Infrastructure District as well. So wanna recognize that they are here to answer questions and, um, and they're available. All right, let's go through um, just quickly, uh, the compliance for um, this resolution. So Resolution twenty-three fifty-nine is asking for the council to create um, the Wood Ranch Public uh, Infrastructure District. Um, the city has a district review committee that has um, made sure that they are in compliance. We're gonna quickly run through those. So we received a letter of intent and petition from Third Cadence on July twelfth. Um, the city put its review committee together and um, reviewed that petition and LOI in August of twenty twenty-three. Um, we worked together with them and um, and began the draft of the governing document, which they completed and um, submitted to the city on September fifth, along with an interlocal agreement. Um, we reviewed them during September. Um, and then the fees that are required to bring this resolution to pass were paid today. Um, and that was my fault. They are usually way more on top of things than I was. I was late sending them an invoice. Um, so that was administrative compliance. They complied with all of those administrative requirements that are in your um, paid policy. The second piece was um, evaluation criteria. The unique enhancement value for this public infrastructure district is thirty sixty-three point one million dollars currently. That will be the debt limit that we will set. Um, and it will not exceed that amount uh, at any time. The land that is currently being requested to uh, be emixed is, does not have a current pit overlay. So it will be unique to that area. Um, we require a mill levy of less than four mills, but no ma- no levy will be, is requested. The repayment source will be assessment, which we'll have a slide on in a moment. We require a debt term of less than thirty years. They're asking for twenty years per issuance. Um, and the net proceeds from the debt were not to exceed the unique enhancement value, which is currently sixty-three point one million. But their current estimate for their net proceeds is forty-four point six million. But we'll see how that plays out as those issuances occur. However, that limit will not be exceeded. Okay. Next slide. Um, as we went through after a work session in mid-September, an assessment with Wood Ranch would be based on their lot size. It would be equal, it would equalize the participation in this district by owners. Um, the average assessment currently would be about forty-three thousand dollars. But how that assessment would be paid um, is going to be determined by the market, quite candidly. The developer could take on that share if the market doesn't bear that assessment. Or um, the buyer may take on a portion of that or, or all of that on either side. Um, the amount is disclosed to a buyer at, at contract or at the time of deposit. The buyer can choose to finance the obligation or they can choose to make monthly payments towards the obligation over a period of time. They may choose that if their interest rate on their mortgage exceeds the interest rate on um, the assessment. So that allows more flexibility. And any assessment revenue that would be collected will redeem their debt annually. Next slide. The next section for compliance was the applicant evaluation. So we had to look at, do they have a history behind them? Are they gonna be able to perform um, once this is created? The historical performance um, for members of Third Cadence are were principles in the development of Daybreak in South Jordan. They have a strong history of this kind of development. The proposed finance plan was reviewed by myself, um, and was prepared by DA Davidson. Um, we reviewed the debt service and, and how those debt proceeds would be um, used. And they are in compliance with what I believe would be a strong plan of finance. Um, the development plan is reviewed um, to the Sees Master Plan by Mr. Langford. Um, and he completed that review and checked off the box there. Regional and overall benefit to the city was reviewed by the committee overall, which consisted of Corbin Lee, our CIO, Jamie Davidson, our assistant CIO, myself, Josh Chandler, our city attorney, and Scott Langford, um, our community development director. And then credit, creditworthiness has been assessed by DA Davidson currently, and I have reviewed that as well. Next slide. The governing document evaluation was, the governing document itself was prepared by Gilmore Bell. Gilmore Bell is our representative. Or we may not pay them, or we ask for their um, fees to be reimbursed. They are representing us. We have engaged them as our representative. Um, and that's Randy Larson, who's here in the audience as well. The requirements for our governing document was that um, the district be described in length. So there were like twenty-four different um, ways for that, that description to be met. They met all of them. The requirements and expectations are to be outlined and they were to disclose and report back to council on an annual basis. And that was defined in the governing document as well. Next slide. Um, so we're gonna hand this over to the council for any discussion or questions you may have. You may ask any of the city staff that reviewed this or you may ask the applicants themselves. Um, but we believe that we've given you lots of information and this is um, I think really good thing for the city. So we highly recommend it. Thank you.
Questions from the council. We'll start with Councilmember Green.
I'm gonna direct this one to uh, Mr. Larson. Please. Are we the first person, are, are, are we one of the first organizations in the state to do one like this?
Right, right button, please.
There we go. Good now? No, you're not. Not anymore. Um, we have approximately uh, I'm aware of fifty PIDs that have been approved across the state. Um, the amount that have, are ripe for issuing bonds is less than that. Um, I think we've done about uh, fifteen to twenty uh, bond issuances for PIDs across the state in various capacities.
The reason why I ask that is that just makes me feel better that we're not the first person going down, the first person plowing that road that we have no idea what's under that gravel. So, so thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right. Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Just a little bit of a quick expla- oh, just a quick explanation on this. Um, Wood Ranch, if you're not familiar with it, is at about seventy-south on the west side of U one eleven. Very, very large development over there. And the pit is a mechanism of funding the infrastructure that would be supporting that neighborhood. Uh, gives the developer a couple of different options on how they pay for what's needed before the development's built. So we've had a lot of conversations about this over three years, four years now. So if it sounds like you're not getting the whole picture tonight, that, that, that's why. There's about four years of information that led up to tonight. So with that, we'll open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak to the council regarding Resolution twenty-three dash zero, not zero five nine, which would authorize the governing document for that. Now is your time to do so. If you've joined us online, uh, looks like we no longer have folks who are dialed in just by phone, just uh, those who are on by computer. So if you're on computer and would like to speak with us tonight, please hit the little icon to raise your hand. If you would like to speak to this one in your hearing chambers, please come up to the microphone. Please, uh, Mr. Ryan, introduce yourself. From the city, uh, West Jordan City Count, no, West Jordan City Council, West Jordan City.
Um, I was gonna say city council because I believe the PID was brought up my first year on the council, which was six years ago. So this has been going on for a long time. So probably I just wanna thank the city and the city council for not jumping into this overnight. It's been a long process. It's not something that's just done willingly and done overnight. I'm also thankful for the PID because I don't live out there. And I live in District One and I am glad that I don't have to pay for that infrastructure. The biggest things I see as I'm talking to people right now in District One is they don't wanna pay for the infrastructure on the west side, which I get. Uh, we have our homes, uh, that's already been paid for. We actually need our infrastructure fixed in, in District One, cause it's all falling apart. But that's another story. Um, not the city's fault, just age. Um, but I think the PID is a great way um, for the city and the residents that already live here, so that we don't have to pay for the future infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Anybody else? All right, we'll turn to the council for discussion. I, that would, thank you for keeping me. No, nobody online indicated they'd like to speak. So as Councilmember Green helped keep me on course, we will close the public hearing and return to the council. Um, before we jump over to Councilmember Green, I wanted to say thank you to staff and to the applicants. I like this approach so much better, having an assessment rather than a percentage. There was a lot of confusion when the council spoke about this previously, or concern about potential confusion. What will people think when they see this on their property tax? Are they gonna be coming at the city and having the city explain? And how many resources are we going to have to expend on behalf of somebody financing infrastructure? Having this as an assessment option, I, I think is so much better. So thank you to those who made that possible. Councilmember Green. Oh, Councilmember Whitlock.
I was just gonna make a motion.
Oh, okay. Thank you. If, I just wanna, I echo what uh, Chair McConaughey just said. It makes it quite frankly, easier for the council members, whoever will be in these seats when those notices are there. And I think it also then still puts it on the developer to decide. You know, it's on, it's And I think it also then still puts it on the developer to decide, you know, it's on, it's on you guys. If your future residents are paying for it directly, or if you're adding it to their house costs. Uh, but either way, it's on you. So, uh, I mostly wanna just thank staff that's worked on it and that have answered my questions prior to the, tonight. Thank you.
I was just gonna say thanks to everybody for working on it. It's a big project, a lot of patience. Um, I know what, we were one of the first to put a PIT document together, but we're not the first to finance one, so that's good, Randy. I appreciate that. Uh, with that, I'm going to move to approve Resolution number twenty-three dash zero-five-nine, creating the Wood Ranch Public Infrastructure District and authorizing the government document and inter-local agreement.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Green, second by Councilmember Worthen. Any discussion to the motion? Did I say Worthen? I meant Whitelock. Thank you for listening to what I mean, not what I say, Cindy, when that goes in the notes. Councilmember Green and Councilmember Whitelock. Okay, not seen any discussion to the motion. We'll turn back to Miss Quick for a vote.
Vice Chair Bloom, yes. Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Chair McConaughey?
Hi.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Worthen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob? Oh, he's gone, sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, Councilmember Pack?
Yes.
Thank you. I shall that motion passes six to zero.
Alright, that will bring us over to our next public hearing. I believe Mister Gardner's gonna be speaking to us on this one about the definition of material change and how that impacts stormwater fees. Mister Gardner?
Um, last year, last year's legislative, uh, uh, legislative session, Senate Bill, uh, one-seventy-four was passed and signed into law by the governor. What Senate Bill one-seventy-four does is limit the amount of, or the number of plan review or subdivision reviews that a municipality, uh, can take or can do on a uh, submitted complete application for a subdivision. So, that would be two preliminary reviews and two final reviews. Uh, if the city exceeds, uh, that, then particularly on the final review, then the plan or subdivision is deemed approved. Um, with that, in the legislation, they said unless there's a material change submitted by the applicant, then it is bound by those four reviews. However, conveniently, the legislature did not bother to put what a definition of a material change is. Um, and so that is sufficiently ambiguous that it gave us a lot of concern at the city that a lot of things could be called material changes to any particular, uh, developer or subdivision applicant. So, with that being said, the city, out of an abundance of caution, um, has, uh, developed our own definition that will be codified if approved by the council in Western City Ordinance. Um, it is unknown at this time, but the legislature will approve a definition for material change in the next legislative session. However, Senate Bill one-seventy-four is, the cities are, will be required to follow it, uh, beginning February first, twenty-twenty-four, which is, I think, probably the second week of the legislative session. So, if they do come up with a new definition, we'll be bound for it. So, a definition has been, uh, developed for what material change means. It is a very lengthy definition. If the council would like me to go through it line by line, I'd be happy to do that. Okay, is that what you want? Okay.
I'm not seeing secondary support for that one, so.
Yeah, basically, so I will give you the annotated version, which is that if, first and mostly, if they, uh, changed the subdivision plot or the, the plan itself, if it goes against the wishes of the planning commissioner, city council, if it changes utility connections, utility needs, if, uh, the density of the development is changed, if any, any transportation corridors are altered, uh, that type of thing. If there's amenities that they agreed to put in, that they decided that they wanna change midstream, that would be a material change. Now, a material change is not, uh, under West Jordan ordinance, is not determined by one single person. It is determined by a review team, which consists of city planners, engineers, real property administrator, fire officials, and other city employees. If they feel like that team feels a material change has taken place, then they will be sent a written determination that a material change has taken place and that it, the review needs to start at review number one again. Um, so that'll be sent in writing to the, the applicant. So, it won't be just a phone call, but it'll be writing, so that we have a paper trail. That being said, the applicant is willing to appeal the material change if the determination of material change to an appropriate department head. If it's a, a water or sewer utility issue, it would be, uh, the appropriate department head would be Greg Davleport because he is over utilities. If it's transportation, it would be Brian Clegg because he is over transportation, so on and so forth. So, that is the definition of material change. The other thing that this, the other issue that this ordinance would, so I'm driving him out, I'm sorry. The other issue that this would, would amend is, by practice, the city has collected stormwater impact fees at the approval of the subdivision. Uh, because generally, on a subdivision, that is when the stormwater impact is generated by the city. Because they build roads, build infrastructure, build ponds, that type of thing. That recently has been challenged. It was not codified, so the city felt it prudent to codify it, and so, uh, fourteen-two-three will read, if approved by the council and signed by the mayor, approval of all subdivisions and the start of any soil disturbance or construction. Therein, it shall be subject to the prior payment in full of all app, applicable application, review permit, and stormwater impact fees. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Green.
You get paid by the word?
Uh, no, because I would've read the whole thing, so.
I just had to give you hard-finding bills.
Yeah, for those who are interested, it's literally fifty-five lines is what it takes to get the definition of material change here. Alright, so if there are no questions, I will open the public hearing. Again, if you're online and would like to speak to this definition chain, or the addition of the definition of material change to our code, now would be the time to indicate your desire to speak. Please, if you're online, hit the button to raise hand. If you're here in council chambers, you're welcome to come to the microphone. Alright, I am not seeing anybody in chambers coming up to the microphone and giving it about half a minute, forty-five seconds or so for those online, and I'm not seeing any indication from those online that they'd like to speak to this item. Therefore, I will close the public hearing and return to the council. Councilmember Green.
I'm gonna move to approve ordinance number twenty-three, twenty-four, amending city code, and Cindy, you can copy the rest.
And I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Greens, second by not Councilmember Worthen, uh, Councilmember Bloom. Any discussion to the motion?
I should've.
Alright, no discussion to the motion, therefore, Miss Quick, please walk us through a vote.
Chair McConaughey?
Hi.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bloom?
Yes.
Councilmember Pack?
Yes.
Councilmember Worthen?
Yes.
Thank you. I shall that motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. That brings us to business item A for this evening, which is regarding the renewal of the lease agreement with, between the city and the West Jordan Historical Society. Uh, Mister Green, did you wanna speak to this?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, the, uh, West Jordan Historical Si- Society, they're on the Sandy Muse- or the Sandy Museum, the West Jordan Museum, fifteen years of working with that, and it's hardly a good swift, right? Uh, the West Jordan Museum, uh, they leased property from the city. Um, yeah, I failed, uh, we failed this summer to execute an automatic renewal in their lease agreement. We need to renew that lease with them, uh, now as a new lease. Uh, however, we bucked my intention when my zeal to bring this forward to the council and get a new lease executed. There's a couple of mistakes in the biblified item tonight, and a few things we need to go back and build a track on. Uh, therefore, I would ask that we table this agenda item for a, for a later date, so we can come back and, uh, make sure we've got our eyes dotted and keys crossed.
Councilmember Green, since it was agendaized, I'm going to make the formal motion to postpone this item to a future date uncertain.
We have a motion by Councilmember Green, second by Councilmember Whitelock. Any discussion to the motion? Seen none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair rules, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to our consent items, which include approval minutes from four prior meetings, uh, and inter-local agreement with Kearns Township for storm drain replacement and a, um, uh, design solicitation agreement with Kearns for sixty-two hundred south. Councilmember Green.
Can, can we? I have a couple of questions on B and C, can, so can we pull those? And then, and.
We can pull them or we could discuss them prior to a motion.
Okay.
Whatever.
The only question I have, Corbin, initially, maybe you can explain it, or Brian, is that in one of the documents, it talks about sixty-second South being in Taylorsville, Kearns Improvement District in W- West Jordan. So, when we're, when we're signing these agreements, is Taylorsville part of that? Or is this just kid?
It's Kearns. It's the Kearns Metro's. Taylorsville isn't participating. They've pretty much already, they only had a small section, and they've already done their part, so they didn't wanna participate. So, it's between the city and Kearns.
Okay. That's, that was the only question I had, is I just wanted to make sure Taylorsville wasn't involved in this.
Yeah, they declined to participate.
Alright, any other questions or perhaps a motion?
I, I'll move to approve all of those consent items.
I'll second this time. It, it's me this time.
Motion by Councilmember Green, second by Councilmember Pa-
Yeah, I don't even think that.
Councilmember Worthen has the second on that. Any discussion to the motion? Since there are resolutions, we do need a roll call vote, so we'll turn back to Miss Quick.
Thank you. Councilmember Worthen?
Uh, oh, yeah, me, yes, yes.
Chair McConaughey?
Hi.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Uh, let's see, sorry, Councilmember Pack?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bloom?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Thank you. I shall that motion passes six to zero.
Alright, and now that brings us to Ca- City Council remarks. We will start with Councilmember Pack.
Great, thank you, Chair McConaughey. Wonderful to see that the PIT ordinance was finally decided. What an interesting, uh, journey that's been. I remember it being one of the very last items that we tackled prior to COVID shutting the world down. So, three and a half years, as Mister Lam mentioned in public comment, it's interesting to see how the hogs of the wheels of government can move on slowly, but thoughtfully, methodically, grateful to live in a society where we have due process, where we allocate sufficient time to gather information from various sources, people on all sides of the issue. Let the week can, uh, move forward. I believe there's strength, having seven people's viewpoints, synergy that way, and decreasing blind spots, grateful for staff and all that they do to facilitate, uh, all of the, the research and document generation. Speaking of staff, a, a great shout out to Tangi Sloan. My first recollection of interacting with her was when I was a newly appointed volunteer, trying to do some onboarding. For patch kids or dads, so every once in a while, I go on and give her a sour patch, you know, whenever, whenever I need to meet with her, and she always makes you feel like you're the only person in the world at, at that moment in time, the most important person. So, appreciate working with, uh, all of you as well, cause I know that same, uh, mentality exists with staff, council members, grateful for our collaborative efforts together. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Worthen.
I just wanted to give my shout out tonight to our staff for council. Yes, Warren. Warren and Cindy, and Alan's not here, but, um, I just wanted to make sure that you guys know how much I appreciate you. Warren, I haven't even had the chance to know, to get to know you, but with the name like Hallmark, you have to love him. I mean, come on. I mean, I just said from here on out, you don't have a first name, you're just Hallmark, that's it. But you guys really are everything behind us. And, and my day job, yeah, I'm the behind-the-scenes person that keeps things running and keeps the machine going, and I've always played that support role. And I love that support role. I like being in that position. But I, I also understand how important it is, and honest to God, without you guys, we just could not be who we are, what we do. Your support is everything to us. So, my shout out tonight goes to both of you and Alan. And just thank you so much for all the hard work you guys do every day, day in, day out. All the little things that just make the difference, that we can do our jobs effectively. Thank you.
Councilmember Bloom.
What was that? Um, this is my last council meeting with you. I will be, I'll be on a work trip on your last one. So, I just wanted to publicly say thank you for giving your heart and giving everything to the city and to this council and being such a wonderful, bright energy to all of us here, and that you're gonna be missed, and that's thank you for everything, and I just wanted to say that.
Alright, I don't see any other, uh, council remarks. There are no administrative items. Therefore, Councilmember Green?
What's that? Make a different motion, like seeking unanimous consent to adjourn. That was my motion.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Chair rules, motion passes unanimously. We stand adjourned.